Tial second day a twelve special session, el al September eleven, el Monday. Am la mogodom el mora order. Agulit a bekladun bol teleactu bol alma kadibun gnuwel, wey adamu mora order obisnesi al gupsige. Clear? Kamorul kor.
Speaker Anastasio.
Oui.
Delegate Arura.
Oui.
Delegate Gibbons Junior.
Oui.
Delegate Gulliver.
Oui.
Floor Leader Kanai.
Oui.
Delegate Kamsong.
Oui.
Delegate Marino.
Matiam.
Vice Speaker Niraywet.
Oui.
Delegate Niratka Kanai. Delegate Ongidoble.
Oui.
Delegate Otob.
Oui.
Delegate Lulgo.
Oui.
Delegate Sinzak.
Oui.
Delegate Solabla.
Oui.
Delegate Talley.
Oui.
Delegate Umetaro.
Oui.
Mister Speaker, ngani akorum?
Se gidam ngari akorum, gidah fifteen rada ngartian ya madam Kanai amu deagas el mey man smel, mo deagan se el mechion gid. Ndii mirgoklum el me raga losing mal woldu bertial budget. E ongita bo da tagarrogue edo piira full aseken. Bo ra durudra bid nighte da pasirni. Agotey da man berenga suhliun me aga. Me gidat staptra seven el an man seven dori, ragapsagera Monday. Gida madengel bekladun losing kadam saadra Yosa An. Girel tial mer rag twenty twenty four. Mal klo to tellela bo da domesa tial budget. Edo mesa yel mora state gid. Gida angodel adra house gidada omte eblu. Omte eblu adma adamegada make sure yel ontrir adra state bo da address. Nguidate floor leader domesa galenderin two page. E bom bom o awalale bom motigay gaurire da argusige.
Oy, basawal speaker, win gabsingel mer ra ma vice na gotu klo la gidada delegate rimal Arura. Ar bekladun rogui win gabsige. Kadam mor sel item four ra galender gid, man argisel journal under adaption makmomega motion bo da adaptra naen tey journal ra eleven roger session.
Se gidam motion, emna second day, adapt se gid el journal. Tigir gongei du oi, omto, yanga naso adaptel floor leader.
Tiyagam mega motion bo da differ action gid, gidra la twenty third day ra eleven regular session.
Se gidam motion, emna second day, differ sectionidol del journal. Tigir gongei bol wei sey du oi, omto, naso differ floor leader.
Oy, direkt speaker, ngani aklo, ameni gishan, obisa president meri gara gabsige. Ngariya one ninety two a di sky jur segid kor a workshop, national stakeholder workshop, gidra la climate change. Mer bekladun amo masang emtangis segid. A one ninety three a proclamation of president twenty three three sixty three, tial declara month of September, el monational emergency preparedness month. One ninety four a invitation, mer sel seventy eight session ra by United Nations General Assembly. Olubongala one ninety five a transmital sel executive order number eight four eight four, gidra la national coordinating mechanism, gidra la facilitator sel coordinate government of Republic of Palau's effort to combat tial tingela NCD. Gida mer sel item six, ngaria table communication under item six, ngaria departmental communication seventy four, amla ra Ministry of Finance mer gid, edo wei sey el deswir a widro lsey compact transport fund, mesel certification ra budget, a budget odoriki. Sel seventy five a diregal amla ra minister, a letter from Ministry of Health, gidra sel child raising subsidy regulations.
Oke, floor leader.
Oui, kabo.
Se gidem blam regonai segid, ma yanga diel an akasaring yel mora chairman of Health, mo mesel che regulation, report mer awalaw. Continue floor leader.
Oy, se gid, amla akasar awuror speaker, mer dumal mol mor sel item seven, ngariya state communications, ngaria direkt klo al communication ra state mer gid. Seventy four amla klobogal blurang ayangal, el mer gid, edo diregal di wei sey sel annual performance report ra FY twenty twenty three. Diregal amla ra blurang arada, ndirigal performance reportirtir ra FY twenty twenty three. Diregal seventy six, communication seventy six, amla ra angatang state governor chair siyar, el olngita additional funding, el mor continue sel Ibo Bang Ninis Waterline Project. Olubongaling sey seventy seven, emla ra diregal klo et klobogal blura beliyog, amla ra Governor Robert. El diolngita anges burgid, gidra la sabakle la sel walontril mora ikpibil gidra amomngis sey sel channel ra alo oldak. Gida mal mol mol mor sel item nine, ngaria imos standing committee report under sel item, makmomega motion bo da adapt ra standing committee report number eleven dash one oh two, yanga gidra la house bill number eleven dash one fourteen dash eleven, sel FY twenty twenty three.
Se gidam motion, emna second day, mo adapt tial committee report ra away sey means, gidra la Yosa An lo mora October, gidra la fiscal year twenty twenty four. Ma wey adamu ra floor leader discussion, ya gulitra a chairman ra away sey means, delegate tra bluroror, bol buskidar reporte, esolakam ya amadingel bekladun, dinganama vice speaker ra diaki member, et tiakumeza signature man la togasay ingrim. Awalaw legora chairman away sey means, peskidar agamangalo musodem tial committee report ra away sey means.
Sulara tial speaker, mal win gabsingel mor haum ma vice speaker ma floor leader ma gotu klo a gid alura. Mer bekladun ngat tial da al gabsige. Speaker, akmo report ra committee ra away sey means, amo report ra bill eleven dash one one four dash eleven. El gamne referring in, el mer committee away sey means. Tial bill atayrol ngis speaker, da mdek wasing budget law, fiscal year twenty twenty four. Diregal logi authorization, blasendinga president el mer hundred eleven million two hundred seventy four thousand seven hundred seventy nine. Ndidi mo appropriate amount ninety nine million five hundred eighteen seven hundred seventy nine dollars. Gidra la national treasury, mora annual general operations, special revenue, debt services. Gidra la budget republica belaw. El mal mut ra endel next year twenty twenty four, September dori, sel bukum olubong krisiela budget aktari. Ogiu se gid, speaker, gadun lamombe galiya budget bill, ma committee ra momu ra report tingil. Wasia House amle receive tial presidential communication, seal number ngi a twenty three dash one two seven six. Sel press communication, gidra la introduction, presidential fiscal twenty twenty four budget bill. Gadingilu sey July eleven twenty twenty four. Ya press communication, ndirigam amle include the law bangele ngal budget bill, proposal president, introduction, ndirigol bangele sel fund availability analysis. Documentol bangele mer dumal mesa yegay gidra gwis speaker. Ma gidam ne propose a bill estisignated House bill number eleven dash one one four dash eleven. Gida amle introduce ngin la House, July nineteen twenty twenty three. Wa haum ngilu ra July nine, amlo sey adal entretene gidra July nineteen el al twenty twenty three. Diregal dios isil sils, July twenty nineteen twenty twenty three. Ya gamle akasaningil mer away sey means for review and reporting, gidit tial ngat tial since speaker. Diregal committee ra amle note sel presidential communication wasia. Twenty twenty three, compact review, gidam ne akasaningi compact review amilkatmoq. Diregal otia strong commitment, gidra support el mer awuror belaw. Economic development, government ra meri gel, edo diregal increase a budget authorization el al fiscal twenty twenty four. Diregal partneringi, ma support ngi, ogiu se gid, the compact review until Congress, ndii, dumal blakta kuwasey, dumle akasane argument, gidam ne worry far ngi, ndii diregal di repending, ogiu sel babinga president ra Congress ra meri gel. Se gidabol blakta, speaker. Diregal ogiu se speaker, ndirigal president amle state ra budget, amle include additional funding drodano. Amont ra twenty million, rapas transport fund, compact fund gid. Lsa stopgap, mesure, mo fund replace tial gid, mo fund ten eleven dash one one four dash eleven. Ya diregal sache seku tial drodano, amaynat bi use esa source, mo deag ablogu dospe ngi esa source, al suguma awuror meri gel approved tial. Ma go go ultuira blur meri gel, speaker, wasia. Tingila president, pa singul tuira meri gel, al suguma Congress etir approved tial udo, dingla ngari atel edo mo deag adro dano ngi, mesel duwai gid udo, edo go dospe, mandia abodo drodano. Ndii se gid, speaker, au committee ra mo oma gael, saadra seyi, sel dumal mol mer committee report. Se gidam saadra mikmombe galiya, bo do otia udoswe la committee, gidra tial gil togora drodano. Diregal dios isil press communication twenty three, a diregal ble highlight ta bebi ra togora alsel. Diregal gidra togora blakwant, mora egal state blakwant. President amle note FY twenty four wasey. Ngariya substantial increase, el mo support state government. Logiya blakwant, el mo finance operations, encourage infrastructure development. Ya gid, el klo balala, president wasia mo increase egel direct support, gidra state blakwant. Esensial gidra promoting security, strengthen government investment in the states, el mo promote, promote, local production, ma goods, ma services, egal beklas state speaker. Se gidam asor alight drima, lo ma president amle olonas egel blakwant. Diregal president a acknowledge, wasia substantial amount, egel authorization appropriation, el mo seyala wrongful lomru ra milkatmoq, gidra ngel Mister Russell Tagisan sey iya. Se gidu udo, dingal topdengi, sel a budget, a donal mo gado masmodi, a diregal ultebdi speaker wasey. Mol ngasiyotri gey gid, gey gid, Mister Russell Tagisan iya. Diregal momonge edel, se gid, blal highlight ngia president, sel communication ngi a wasey. Diregal ngariya strong representation of Republic ra belaw, gidra regional and global events. To wuning saadra Pacific Games, American Asian Games, emsaadra Festival of Arts. Diregal amla ngayegid udo, dingam ne authorize, edi emla appropriate, nding authorize and anticipate, egel actual cost ngi, mer al mis speaker, mer gadun no, omes ayegel kuwasay. Gida president, a diregal parta party ngi, monglo an, agadmo omes ra agree. Ogiu se gid, authorization, blal kitmakriya president. Diregal momulbong sel president a earths a diligence ra togora aldudu. Gidra tial vulnerable members, population, gidra togora minimum wage. Se speaker, agadonik mongara committee, gidha amra laulior, gidra se gid, togora minimum wage. Klo musube, gidra minimum wage, lagadam la ngasa udo government, lagadam daswa private sector, ndii diregal gidra el momwenik kuwasia, al ngasa mal ngaran tommeli, mongaran gutmakli. Gey gidha garel, olbi regula el mosira ber, emes atlangkeil di fora bo do aktari. Se diregal amle wandal, communication ngi amal mestres ngi. Ogiu gey gid, speaker, away sey means, kamiri ra. Amle review tial House Bill eleven dash one one four dash eleven. Edo diregal lobengesel attachment ra FAA, emne prepare tial report. Agimlo konseerela input my request ra togora ades speaker, ameni kuwasen, egel rogul request emle. A diregal blo the prioritize, mosent entretene, egel guk mosuk ela el adra, hopeful ye guk donal me, gado mo omes ayegel bebi. A diregal amle, ngariya atel edes speaker, mle mitra Minister Finance, kalbu duwenga amla gotal adu dimitengi. Lagadam ne mitengi se July twenty fifth twenty twenty three. A diregal blo ngariya gamin gishel bangele awut sayda egay. Diregal amle ngariya atel edes, mle mitra president himself. E ra sel August two, ma August seven, el al twenty twenty three. Ya bi, a diregal dumal ela egay, emla ngariya atel edes, uktimo alduu staffertir, edo iron out a bebi ra togora tial togora budget. Diregal lo ngayengi se speaker, mer gadun no adu alduu lobentirira, our governors association, sel August eighteen, el al twenty twenty three. Kloriol merat tial budget, speaker, mo make sure ndia agadur webter ngi. Edo diregal, bidebod blakta, speaker, kuwasen, ndimla gda wey gwaad, mal uven ndimla gda broadcast, egel meeting gid, insuadra adu alduu, gabongben amadu adu alduu, mandia egay gid, ngora blakta ra alduu alduu, kuwasen ngariya gwaabarrot, mangaram sel adu alduu, emblag blakta, mesel topdengal uro era adurwa under standengi. Diregal, el committee ra wa, olomes akto ngil alduu, the president aulul muskid. Man no akkuru babal sebe, el mega free allegation, egel udo, speaker. Abingil alduu, dagadu man no akkuru babal sebe, el mor sel gidagutmakpi wasin tabusun mer bekladun. Edo diregal, keep a mind ra committee wasey. Rogul adan ngariya, amansengsi, mal uven challenges tial economic situation. Gidda continue, hopeful wasin, masu munguk, egel party gidagutnogod, nding ngariya ndia gadmo oit, nding ngariya aldax, gidra ruri, mal uven, dagadu mesa gana me gid, guk improve mo sey eden, guk wigavaya egay gid. Ogiu se gid, after improved economic development outlook, edo diregal tial tobadar a COVID nineteen pandemic. Apparently, gadu mo increase a global hardship, gidra, ngariya increase a global hardship, gidra togora grul, ma togora climate change. Ma insana, speaker, committee ra. Omerekma president, amle propose ra budget ra twenty twenty four largely, instruct necessary balance between the need to spend while being cautiously optimistic about the economic forecast. Gidra opportunity, gidra growth in opportunity. Ogiu se gid, speaker, committee ra, diregal mo propose a bebi ra changes, amendment, gidra tial bill, efilo kuwasin appropriate, gidin the current climate, fine turn, tial gid eleven dash one one four dash eleven. Agongiya president, speaker, dingan ngayegel guk tomese, mosopakitel udoswe la president, emo dumal mer wey, edo gida mamasa egay gid, laddu, mobrior. Mesel initial, mara of clarification, committee ra note, egel guk minor clerical errors, malu mathematical errors throughout eleven, dash one one fourteen, egem garelt togo speaker, nding ge ede clear alsel aldalabin, gidam ne address alsel. Mandia bo da saadra egel, ngukti clerical, ma gukti additional numbers, mer dumle gwarek. Esedel mor oma gaay asumun, bo da saadra, ndimal garel alduu, speaker, mer gadi gid correct, tial gid plase mainas, ma waqamas. Ogiu se gid, committee ra propose amendment, amendment ra tayrol, mo include, reflect, tial gid, amendment amount, proposed in this report, authorize hundred ten million four hundred thirty two nine hundred eighty seven thousand. Appropriate hundred eight million eight hundred two nine hundred eighty seven thousand, gidam mo discuss, egay gid. Mesedel mor blakta, mor oma gaed, egay gid, lo ur gidam laongas. Lagadun natsinsa egel lo ur, authorize hundred ten, egore appropriate hundred eight. Dulu gitakke lo ur, ngayebok pasa egay gid, changes, speaker, bol. Dagadun ngayakumdaswa committee ra, mandingay, ndidadu buk, gorense omes segid, esedel mome. Ma gotel proposal amendment, gidra tial section two, which, segid, otherwise appropriate, fund, gidla executive branch, limit, fund authorization, sel. Dumal gongiya ulel, kuwasia, president amle authorize eleven, gidha ngilul meriol, mo di, egel rogul appropriation amo matsir ngi. E gor, diregal accept, agree, egel amount proposed for appropriation, executive branch, section two. President amle, lil al wora fifty one million thirteen thousand five hundred seventy seven. The however, away sey means, a diregal increase additional amount, drodano, compact transport fund, and stopgap, mesure, proposed by the president, mo dori million. Mesedel dumal ngi, stopgap, se gid, osapakle la budget, gidra twenty million aldudan. Speaker, gadul tuir, sel Congress itmu mogonge india, asumun ngonge, mo deag adolar ngi, gidha ndim gora amringle, speaker, gidha ngara committee ra, omesel wasey. Mal ngene, mul tuir, adis isil date, September dori, gidha gonge ba budget, mal uven dia. Ma government gidha, gonge bolakal ngene, gale bo do, ngso sa togora operation, ma services ra blur belaw. Edo diregal ospe ra alduu, alduswe la committee a odorsi il wasey. Agonge, mo aldudan, mo dori million, gutmakri tial budget gid, masum a gonge awuror meri gel, malakal ngene. Gidha mo gutmakri tial budget gid, ogiwa alduu, ngal alsel compact fund. Se gid, awalaw aldus, gidra behind, se gid, additional ten million. President, takin ngene, momala twenty, ndidigod omes ra gansengsel, ma operational gid. Kuwasen, dagadu ospe, additional ten, ma committee, a diregal mo open, speaker, mesel FAA gid. El al sel mo meser ngi, adag ngene, yanga, dagadu mo chances, sel togora FAA aldudan, mo dori million, instead of ten. Et yanga, mo bangele ngayegid, fifteen million, regular drodano, edo gido ogiwala. Se gid, speaker, committee, gidla bangele president, ta blakta kuwasen, ngi, momala ra ngene, bluram gid, radi oi, kuwasen mogonge, segid, additional drodano, depending, ategid, togora meri gel mogonge. Dian togora meri gel, compact argument, ta blakta ngene, nding ogiwa Congress, el mogonge, mal uven dia. Mal lo, pro continuing resolution, mer gadi, lo ospe, tial udu, guk ngara, a budget akta gid, mandia dagadu pro continuing resolution, falora blur meri gel. Se gid, speaker, awor, omso rela committee, gidra se gid. Diregal propose amendment to section three, sel bom omes, authorization, gidra judicialary. Speaker, mal blakta, judicialary, until, emlongil atel edel, haum mongara, my regular members. Logiya babil ngela chief justice, mor haum, lagadun no alduu, gidra tial ngela chief justice. Sel funding request, judicialary, albeli committee ngi, mor haum. Speaker, chief justice, all days, amle September seven, twenty twenty three. Edo diregal letter, chief justice, yeah, chief just, babil ya House, el mor September seven, yeah, September eight, gidam limit. Mal letter request, fund, will be used to hire key judicial personnel. Edo diregal support, landor situation of officer operations. Edo diregal provide effective operations, case management systems and servers. Amle blakta, babil ngi, speaker, mer gmasa attachment lobengel ngan, babil ngi, chief justice, el mey, dagadu blakta, egel expenditure itemized. Edo diregal, wandro entiria, diregal amle comply lobengel, sel fire salary increase. El tiram no akkuru, egel coste, egay, emtadiregal amle ask, kuwasen, mo raskuam tayegid. Aldudan, bosu amal ahamodey tirtir, egim pe, egel coste ngil, diregal. Emtadiregal no, stoma bebi ra services, judicialary, to amodey tayegid. Mo two ensure, egay gid, el chief justice, ma judicialary, edo mogonge, segid, ontrir. Mesel lilia president, speaker, el amount, el mo officer, judicialary. Gidha di notab, ringi, sel eight hundred twenty five thousand three hundred dori, ngaya gabe, egay gid, rogul, akkuru, coste tir. Plasa, egay gid, services tir ngit, ma total ngi, sel bom omes, judicialary, mas el mo. Speaker, mesel, har mesel, bo da egel actual amendment, de box oris, segid. Total, ndii se gid, nilas judicialary, as of now, a segid, eight hundred twenty five thousand three hundred thirty four. Agul mol madidanat, egid, narration, gid, dagadu mor sel propose amendment to section four. Edo diregal amle authorize, fund, el mor legislative branch. Gidla increase appropriation, sel mora Senate, ma House of delegates. Egel guk timosel general fund, Senate, ma House, speaker, egay gid, guk haum, president of Senate, amle alduu, egel ngansengsel, olbidagulaw, gidam no olngasa egay gid. Diregal ngayi, sel one, aldudan, olbidagulaw, gidha oluspe, ngil, togora operations, ma maintenance. Sel dimlontam appropriations, mesel ave, speaker, gadalamo mes ngira ruri. Ndigumdaswengel asem, guk momasab akker gid, laba egay gid, sel guk blammas. Ndidi, a diregal particular, sel bo da omes, egel togora, auk ngarlal olbid, awut sayder belaw, ma guk togora parliament, ma legislative branch. Ngariya gid, applications, gid, bangele away sey ra blu, mer gadu mo, diregal. Ngariya Association of Pacific Island Legislative Church, sel, diregal mer gatartang, lgora ngariya services, gid, ma egel bebi ra blu. Edo diregal amla mogarele, costam lamral meriyo, mer gadun ngasi. Edo diregal ogiu se gid, ngayi, sel guk, blasel Interparliament Union, members of the House, Senate, amla mo party ngi, South Pacific. Emtadiregal, gidha mo partneringi, ngala legislative, el mor, nganiya hosting, gid, anticipate, dra next year. Mer gadi, a diregal mo party ngi, mo olmosep, esel aire, el mosoi. Dagadu, omes, sel togora, Palau, Japan, Parliament, Fancip, egida minsa, Vered, el al twenty twenty three. Tira amle, mer gadun no olngas, sel udo, el amodaita, adasya balme. Ndidi, a diregal ngariya, togora, naso isip, a togora Taiwan ngi. Mer gadi, amla mo party, segid, el togora, al adasya alme, egel tablo lbelu. Edo diregal ngariya, auk, shupro gal, lomru, gidha, auk, ngani, invitation, el mora, egay gid, tablo lbelu. Edo gid, guk mitengi, esel Senate, ma House, ma tma, egel mora egay gid. Ma egay gid, agora, egel, togora Congress, egid, auk, ogiwa, emsaadra togora Congress, amla. Ogiu se gid, a diregal togora Pacific Island Development Bank, emtadiregal ngariya gid, anticipate, dra Vered, PIDB. El togora housing, ma expansion, ra Vered, PIDB. Ya ngariya gid, meeting ngil, around the region, ra whole year, speaker. Mesedel, mo ul, mer gadi, a diregal, isel amount, ra ya, mesel members, ma participation, gid, active, lobengel. Ya egay, mer al mer ra. A diregal, auk, a diregal, dumal mol, mesel section five. A diregal amla ngayak, auk, babil ngi, ra adu, ra fabor, el mey. Gidam ne agree, lobengela president, sel actual amount, ra fabor. Ndidi, a diregal amla ngayi, gid, anticipation, ra fabor, wasey. Tigir, a diregal ngariya gid, classes, el tiramala, ra annual, tablo, al mansong, sumutguad, ibaid, ra adakuntu, atamom, atadya, et se guk, ngiditil, mesel same level. Dagadu, swadra, mastirat, atel, tigir, adra board, mutha, ma egel required, classes, ra EPOF, malakal say, edo diregal ngarii, sel duaseng. Ngarlil, guk, omes, egel, omes, la, tigal, custodian, sel gid, Raymond James, egel obisit tir, mtegal manager, sebisit. Gukti, ma, ma widing, tigil, actual, la rega, da egel udo, dra transport fund. Ogiu se gid, speaker, lagadun no, tabidi, se gid, additional funding, mul mastiril, al time, seven fifty. Et umle, atengi, by ten percent, ra previous, ra, meni, no forty five. Lagadun no, move to longs, ill, by thirty, se gid, aldudan, mastiril, total seventy five, in all, ra budget, tira mer al mer, egel mer al mer ra. Sel section six, dagadu, mo, a diregal, appropriate, egel, blakwant, sel blada sohdi, lobengel, sel babinga president, wasey. President, olanas, egal, blakwant, el base salary increase. Vigo, president, amle propose, egay gid, provide, egel, uneven distribution, el base salary increase. Sel bo da, mar saadra salary increase, dagadu, mar saadra edisi, adu, government. Dian, aldudan, services, el mor, adan, egel, government, which, egel government, ta provide. Ogiu se gid, speaker, dagadun ngel wasey.
The President will be the most important president. Section twenty-two. And the annual base salary is scheduled by the committee of thirty-three PNC subsection seven oh one A. The committee gives the means to change the schedule to increase the state. It is said that the law is required. Section twenty-two means to increase the salary nationally and state. The keeper's say that it takes a bit of discussion area state. We will be the state or the SEC. Modernity will get a little increase via the state. Again, the most important increase nationally. The schedule again, again, thirty-three PNC. But then number. Again, again, the finance, I mean, we will talk again, scheduled basis again. And increase again, I'm not talking about section twenty-two. The proposal amendment twenty-three subsidy life line. It is the actual appropriation of the fund. And the most essential version of the president's figure, again, subsidy life line. Again, the authorized, the not appropriate. Again, I'm going to last the twenty twenty-three. I'm going to authorize the ten cents subsidy money. Per kilowatt. And the subsidy is what is based at two thousand five. The water is the water. Again, the authorized appropriate in the understanding. But the government does not support it. Maybe they did the more than any. But it is the appropriate, the total amount. And again, the appropriate last in the land. But if you choose the subsidy, the most important, the most excellent. And the board will come and change the SEC. The SEC will allow the bill and I will support it. The president will give the review of the advisory. The section two is the same as the five hundred thousand. And again, the most three. The most important, the Congress, until the Congress. The say that to the compact review agreement. And I am saying the increase in Independence Day celebration. And I am saying that to the section twenty-six civil settlement. Say that the same can be specified by the president. And the section twenty-seven Pacific Games. Section twenty-eight microgame. Section twenty-nine Festival of Arts. Section three Economic Development Plan. My section three one, I'm still there now. And there are amendments. So it is to authorize, the appropriation. The most important, the president. I'm sorry, again, appropriation. And you say that, again, the most important, the most important. Ma. I'm not the most important section three one, I'm still there now. And there are amendments. And the proposed amendments, including twelve new sections. Based on the request, my discussion, a report on the leader of the land. But who must again, who must speak again. The best, the good. A new, the committee will have a new section. I want the amendment, the new section, the appropriate. About the hundred fifty thousand more. Where are the pump? But my, I sell well, the blue. I will. The most important, the. The federal, we will talk about the Senate. My president, the number supplemental budget. The most, the president, the Senate, my Senate. So it is very much more than the budget. More or less, the program. Say that the. The two, the land. The most important, the program. I will allow the. I am saying the. The director, the director, the social, the director, supplemental budget. It will be. My last, the most three, the most, the most, the last supplemental. And say that forty-five thousand, the extension of dam. Grad. No extended, say that the water dam. The same is the number supplemental budget. On the second section, the speaker, the fifty thousand. The Pacific, Fort Pacific Island Parliament Group Conference. Say that the best, the last, the host. The fifty thousand more. I will again. The host. And the most important, the members of the old video. No. No, my, the more. I, again, the Parliament Group Conference. And thus, when. Again, the most likely, the. I'm not, I'm not hosting the twenty twenty-four. Until I'm there, I will. I will. I will. The most important. I will, the section, the same. To. Supplemental more social security. And the social security, the speaker, I'm not doing it. Was it? I will be the. The August twenty-eight, twenty twenty-three. And my, the. 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 Of course, the conclusion of A P P L. Eleven twenty-first supplemental benefit. And the million, the. The. At the end, it will. The most important, the fund. The. The. Most likely, the motorbike, again, the subsidy. While the problem, again, the subsidy, the ISS. And you say that, the speaker, I'm not. I'm not. The book, meet the. At the. Chair board, my administrator. But the. I do, I'm going to. Was it? Oh. The. The motorbike, again, the subsidy. But the little store, say that one point eight. Basically, the same as twenty twenty-three, one point two. I am saying supplemental six hundred thousand. And the. So is. What the, again, I'm going to. The full cost of the subsidy of twenty twenty-four. The total one point eight. One million eight hundred thousand. And there were, say that the sufficient, the more. I will, again, the cost. The. I'm sorry. The. 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 To the civil service pension plan. I am saying, the speaker, the. The civil service, my. For the funds. The. 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 Twenty twenty-three, the. The. Three. Eleven twenty-four, the one point two. And the. 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 To. Supplemental budget of twenty twenty-three. But the more, I'm going to. The additional. The. 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 Three to four million. The. Million. The. 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 The.[416.62]
The sale activity is a little bit lower. We have 75,000 people in the country. We are not allowed to go there. They are going to go to a mall. Change the situation. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We continue to go to the mall. We are going to change the situation. We are going to go to a mall. 75,000 people. We have 75,000 people. 45,000 people. Because everybody across the board is getting a 10% cut. We are going to go to a mall with 75,000 people. We are not allowed to go to a mall. Comfortable. I am going to go to a state park. It is 42% across the board. A state park is not allowed to go there. But I am going to go to a mall. President, we are 8,000. We are 11 million, 75,000 people. We are going to go there. We are going to go across the board. Based on this employment rate. And we are not allowed to go to a mall. 88,000 people. 88,000 people. And it is 42% across the board. Outside of the state. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go to a mall. And we are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are going to go to a state park. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are going to go to a state. To talk about the discussion area. We are not allowed to go to a state. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are going to go to a mall. And we are going to change the situation. We are not realized. We are not adapted to the meeting. We are not allowed to go there. There is an amendment to Section 8. Between authorization and decision. The most I can remember is agencies. First, the agency that is going to be authorized. Authorization. We are not allowed to go to a property. We are not allowed to go to a property. We are going to send an amendment to Section 14. National Commission Committee. It is the most allowed to go there. Regular grant or small grant. We are not allowed to go to a mall. This is the number of 75,000 people. We are not allowed to go to a small and regular grant scheme. We are not allowed to go to a small and regular grant scheme. 50,000. 625,000 regular. 125,000 small. We are not allowed to go to a small. We are not allowed to go to a small. We are not allowed to go to a small. We are not allowed to go to a small. And it is the state services. It is the amount of calculation. We are not allowed to go to the actual. The amount is 76,476,000. And it is the actual number. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. If you do not calculate it, you will miscalculate it. If you calculate it, it is the actual number. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go to the state services. And it is the State 22. We are going to go to the wage salary for national full-time employees. And it is the increase of the national government. We are not allowed to go to a mall. 60,000 plus 100,000. We are not allowed to go to a mall. Services are allowed. The national agencies are allowed. Basically, the more people are going to go there. Increase salary increase. We are not allowed to go to a state. We are not allowed to go to a state. We are not allowed to go there. 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 We are going to go to Section 23. It is 2.810. We are going to go to the 10th. We are going to go to the water and wastewater subsidy. It is authorized and appropriate. But it is not appropriate. We are not allowed to go there. And it is the last. First, the last year. It is the most six months appropriate. The salary. The salary. The subsidy is more than water. First, we are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go to the supplemental. We give a half year, six months. It is a supplemental in six months. We are not allowed to go there. The more people are going to go there. September next year. We are not allowed to go to the subsidy. Water is more than the 10th. We are going to go to Section 23. There is an amendment. The block was saved. We are going to report. We are going to report. 150,000 authorized. 45,000 authorized. The line increase. We are at the Pacific Island Parliament Group Conference. 50,000. It is the supplemental benefit. We are not allowed to go to the report. It is reflected in 1.8 authorized and appropriate. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. Additional 50 permanent supplemental. We are going to go to the insurance. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. Based on 2023. Subsidy for civil service pension plan. It is 1.2 million. We are not authorized. And appropriate. There is a section 9. We are not allowed to go to a mall. Utility line poles. Maintenance. We are not allowed to go to a mall. 150,000. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go to the wedding house renovations and extension. It is 15,000. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go to marine transportation. We are going to go to the water. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. 90,000. We are going to go to the expenditure of marine transportation. We are not allowed to go there. Mobile. We are going to go to the state. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are going to go to the section. 90,000 authority. We are going to go there. We are going to repair my renovation of buildings. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. The cultural center is not allowed. 15,000. The club is not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. 75,000 damage value. The club is 60,000. We are going to go to Section 11. The PNC code is amended. We are not allowed to go to the grant. For foreign approval certificate. It is the section 11. Requirements for grantee. We are going to go to a mall. We are going to go to a mall. 50%. 75%. The commission is half. We are not allowed to go to a mall. We are not allowed to go to a mall. The PNSP. We are going to go to the scholarship. We are going to go to the certificate. We are not allowed to go to the previous year. 79,000. 79,000. We are going to go to 50%. So most likely, we are going to go to additional 50%. It is 79,000. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. Maintain the number. We are not allowed to go there. At least additional 75%. We are not allowed to go there. Additional 25%. We are going to go to the PNSP. We are going to go to a mall. Student grant. There is a section amendment to Section 41, Title 37. The amendment is restriction tariff. It is not allowed to go there. We are 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 not allowed to go there. There is a case. We are not allowed to go there. Dead application at standing in Section 19. Of course, we are not allowed to go there. 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 Resolution. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. Excuse Madam. Madam Kanal. We are not allowed to go there. 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 We are going to go there. We are going to go there.
We are going to go there. We are going to go there. The discussion. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. Vice Chairman. We are not allowed to go there. 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 Our members will go to the committee. We are going to go there.
We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. Important. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. Cooperation. Courtesy. Respect. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going 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 to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We strike out. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. Example. A block grant. Chairman Lulko. A block grant. We are not allowed to go there. 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 It is the version. Budget. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. A block grant. We are not allowed to go there. 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 A block grant. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. 678. So. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. Aversion of the budget. The president is not allowed to go there. We are 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 not allowed to go there. So we are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. Meaning. We are not allowed to cut. We are going to increase. We are not allowed to go there. More. We give a 10%. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. The related budget. We are not allowed to go there. Chairman Lulko. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. Hospital. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. The president is not allowed to go there. He is not allowed to go there. He is not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. Vice Chairman Todor. We are not allowed to go there. 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 We are going to go there. We are going to go there.
We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. Chairman. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. House bill. We are not allowed to go there. 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 2020. We are not allowed to go there. 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 Report. We are not allowed to go there. 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 We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. Report. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. Yeah. We are going to explain the issue. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are 16 delegates. We are not allowed to go there. 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 Attitude. We are not allowed to go there. 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 We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there.
We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. 11 PNC. 11 PNC. We are not allowed to go there. Tax exemption. We are not allowed to incentive. We are not allowed to export. We are not allowed to go there. Last amendment. We are not allowed to go there. Maybe we are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We include other. We are creative, innovative, creating other products. We are going to raise revenue. We are going to go there. Concerning our taxing system. We give existing. We share. We are going to go there. Share information. Maybe we are going to go there. Moving forward. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. Although. We are going to go there.
We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. My right. We are not allowed to go there. 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 We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. Chairman and members. We are not allowed to go there. 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 The amendment. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to discriminate. We are not allowed to go there. Except for states which we understand the situation. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. Report. Chairman. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to discuss. State governmental governors. We are going to go there. We are not allowed 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 to go there. Any one. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. Of course. We are not allowed to go there. 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 State government. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there. We are going to go there. We are going to go there. We are not allowed to go there. PUC. We are not allowed to go there. We are not allowed to go there.
National government, the new initiative, additional sixty dollars increase salary. The government will be given, the government will be given sixty dollars. The national government, it is full time, we realize that sixty dollars. Speaker, this is a big deal, this is a big deal, this is a big deal. This is a supplemental, this is a whole for long term, this is for IP, for state. Because, 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 because,
I like to talk about the agreement, Speaker, I want to talk about it.
I want to talk about it.
I want to talk about the delegation, because, 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 our vacant members, active vacant, also, my mom, the commander, chairman, my vice chair, my vacant members, ways and means committee, the one who is wrong, the one who is wrong, through this committee report, the more I get, the more I get, the budget. February, sure, the budget, executive branch, hospital, school, public health, provide essential services, the other, the lower, the president, the development, the, because, 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 after that, I appreciate, the, because, 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 the, 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 to, 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 my obligation, to repay the loan, the, 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 for, 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 after, for, 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 the support, the, 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 my, 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 this, 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 the, 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 because, 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 after, I want to talk about the chairman, chairman, the, 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 improvement, my repairs, the, 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 because, 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 the, 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 all the time, particularly, how did you, the, 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 ah, 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 because, 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 the, 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 I want to talk about it, because, 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 then, general manager, CEO, Greg, the, 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 I give you, the, 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 I bring, the, 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 my, my, ah, 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 I guess, the, 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 I call them, 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 so, 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 I call them, 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 the, 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 I'm not, 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 because, 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 the, 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 I call them, 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 after, I express appreciation, I want to talk about the chairman, let me, because, because, I say, because, 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 and, 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 because, 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 I, 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 because, 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 the, 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 because, 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 the, 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 ah, 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 because, 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 ah, 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 the, 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 ah, 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 because, 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 I, 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 ah, 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 because, 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 I, 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 ah, 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 I don't know, 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 I, 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 but, 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 ah, 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 because, 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 ah, 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 the, 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 because, 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 the, 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 after, I want to appreciate, ah, 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 because, 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 the, 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 I, 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 the, 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 I, 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 because, 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 the, 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 low solar completely, the, 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 I, 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 I want to appreciate, because, 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 support each other's requests, I want to talk about it, the, 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 the,
I think, because, 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 I give you, because, 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 ah, 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 the, 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 because, 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 I want to talk about the chairman, oh, I want to talk about the chairman, oh, I want to talk about the floor.
Oh, Speaker, I want to talk about the vacant members, I want to talk about the chairman, my vice, especially, the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 forty five thousand, the, 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 I want to remember, because, 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 elevators, the, 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 Speaker, I want to talk about the chairman, I want to remember, because, 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 I remember, the, 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 the chairman, the, 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 the president, the, 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 because, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 because, 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 I, 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 because, 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 the, 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 because, after, before the day end, it, 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 every day, the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 because, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 because, 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 the president, the, 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 then, I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 the chairman, I want to remember, I want to remember, I want to remember, I want to remember, the discretion, the state, the, 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 I want to remember, 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 because, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 the discretion, the state, I want to remember, I want to remember, sorry, I want to remember, I want to remember, salary, I want to remember, 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 the, 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 the chairman, I want to remember, 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 because, 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 then, I want to remember, because, 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 the discretion, the state, I want to remember, 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 a proposal, I want to remember, overall, I want to remember, the, 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 executive, because, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 to work together, because, 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 so, the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 the,
I want to remember, the floor, I want to remember, I want to remember, the, 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 the only way, the, 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 because, 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 oh, I want to remember, 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 because, 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 most of the time, I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 oh, in the long running, the, 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 because, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, I want to remember, I want to remember, I want to remember, I want to remember,
Yeah. Speaker. He, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, the, 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 finally, the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 Speaker.
I want to remember, the, 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 the,
Speaker, the, 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 eh, Speaker, I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, the chairman, my vice, the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, without preservation, I want to remember, I want to remember, I want to remember, I want to remember, the, 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 positive, the, 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 eh, Speaker, actually, I, 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 the, 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 I, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the chairman, I want to remember, I want to remember, I want to remember, I want to remember, the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 the, 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 I want to remember, 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 Speaker.
I want to remember, the, 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 Ugu swir bela mo ra kablamenta aguam. Eh gora do mesi. Guksu edel helpa egal kledel. Si cultural center. Ma asahibay. Ma belivi. Aiga existing. E gemya madenge beklasin to bo ra kwame gi gi da. Ah awasiu mosiaor ra meeting. Ma al du ebebira time campaign. Oi meng. Agu ndasu gi de lu muli. Eh aruranga. Ah begininga niksi ra debong bukariya. Awasiu su edel monge diak di doelinga. Ah conference room ra hotel ma ngado mitra. Ni gi gi de. Awalawla egor ga pli yo.
Sola espira. Atirge el mre si teripe. Lo mge la hedra delegation. Gia chairman tel ley. Spiga. Amral monge la udu lmo si mester adu bela. Mal tarandiri. E gasab akle adu du emotmokla aigel guk war alir. Ma atetelir girila egal gi de. Toko bela ngara bulu ra akkuam. Ni gi gi de bladung. Endi. Ah toko ra adung. Adung tiya de gora mo iti toko ra. Aigela fima. Ah. Si le girala fima iteika landi process. Gemya mbanani le si si ra me nyamla ni tiya taifun. Esi mal si supert taifun el mandekoa amtomal de si. Ma aigel adu ulka isma. Adengi mel tomal ma ngara pele si esegi de mel el agel ol mol ma kol ul. El afte taifun ngara amkol ul. Ma damet si rubal kuiita. Ado ol mol meng ngal mengal mo klo. Mongiwa gi de ala du. Eh al su gumun. Tomo aplar siel toko ra. A small business loan. Ya ogiwa ala du ti gamat toko melom si al adon ashe. Galbarat tarat ti gi gi de buiganger ngal alonge si sagal engineer. Engel engineer amral engineer. Amral lungil la udu. Katmo ku aigel ba biel gi gi da milu takol bay. Adung diak tel mal la ewilar lel diak wa. Igal tablo ul. Uktimlegi lo go si la egal bebiran adu kutmokla. Mongiwa gi de espira. Engbo diak si edel eligible ra siel. Ah small business loan lega NGO. Eh atko ra fima it takes a very long time. Eda ga garen kik wasi quzma wun diak. Eh abo dolariya du si esegi de amount taman deklo si el got. E waigel di lu chel hedra delegation ra tel ley. U requirement ra bulu ra kwam. El got el strict. Eh atko ra omgodol la blay ma construction. E gi da mba ge eda li geta laurere. Diwa aurere adung nu la. Ablar ni ma ngara ke diak aigel requirement niya amal strict. Eh amri gela kwam al mutel strict. Iteika ma long time. Ma gela ala du. Si esegi de omes si esegi de seken asalment. Edo si. Di de riper. Engel engineer la amral ngara ba bingel amral madu. Wasi di de riper de katmo ku edo pasel toko bela edo urere edo lo se. Waldu omes aigel amount siel original plan elbeis la gi gi de toko ra. Ala ra bulu ra kwam. Emitra gero gu requirement taman narba be dimle ga tel me. Riora ogi mu pasent siel. Ma atirge el. Mal mo ulen asunam espira gau ma senet president. Engara mla president rapala association. Ngara saibal me akmadre egal sixteen state. Emdon tiya adu bela diwata tetiri ra ngara kwam. Gi da ga si espira de got ra omdasura bela. Omdasura al su gul bela. Emotmokla gi gi de ngar alede giril bela. Eh egal toko bela ngara aiga ti gamta helpa. Aigel guk ngar alela bulu si. Ma adu bela mel si. Emulu la udu di mo bea ti espira. Mongiwa gi gi de chairman laul. Eh goma lnom saul. Eh hofuli ngara te mel mong. Eh goma omes aigel kama ma gira balu mil shasing. Mongiwa omes aigel. Sula espira.
Sula. Kabo eda li geta ra me.
Spiga msa te al eh. Mbo skin ma beklas. Aktimobentriar beklas namu du espira mal dimlangasaul. Lu gu ni gau ma espira ma waisenminx chairman. Ah. Kelba jet espira mal domes ni mal. Me broko lo singilat chairman mal membersel. Mal mo mogil musang. Eh kausen mo herutamel mongi ra governor si mengemitakir. Mal mongi bedenge swir state ma ni ra state. Mutmaqru gu emir go tibira tartoko lo se tiya gi de ba jet abo rogi mi. Padamre gazulasen eh chairman mal lungil. Lurotkiya ba jet. Dimla mo be sa gi gi de til bilev. Alu mesi ni espira. Em mal lungil ba jet taru gu tungil. Gal jet unam katmo ku la. A house. Eh fe respira endi akmengi wasen bebira bulu. Ah uktimla aigel gada stal nesu mlong. Ah. Agdu me ogdu mlatku siel a in da. Neks ba jet msiel a gamodei. Endi ke demrengasulela beklas espira mosu il. Mu si esegi de dena gua praisyon eh. Gi da di gaudun de rogu lo si gi de delegates ma governor sa di gaudun ni. Si al boniya ni ra stal state. Edo mal mutmaqru gu egu gu du ba aigel su edel mo du. Ma kmeda mkti da abebira delegates lo siya. Malu diak aigel guk kora nesu mongu. Endi ngani si esegi de dena mal mrengasulir espira. Mal apisi iti trige delegates lo uktimla. Guk no girin lo si erema guk neks. La guk la galgo ma neks. Meng segi de spirit gua praisyon espira ma. Ah gora bispectra dongle. Ah adung katmo ku wa tiya gi de. Ba jet espira. Di. Wa diel beo triki da gongi bogi ni lo ra ele. Eh spiga de ke mesab toko. Lulera wa isenminx chairman wa isenminx ma ga espira. Lulmesa ba jet mosu el agamodei te gi de stal nis. Ma aigel begre ma moklo. Endi gen mal uspe abur bela. Watokora skal si. Watokora dengi maran. Si esegi de onki la. Agortu ra agamodei teri ni. Ma si esegi de toko ra paleti lo wasen. Siel toko ra idiri. Hmm diak bo la isabulu mu pea ablal. Gi gi de espira aigel moklo. Toko ni agutu ngaya si me wa isenminx ma ga ngar gu. Emi si esegi de mokol paleti si. Guide line ri gi de mongi mel mongi ma ta gi de. Lungil teretel ngani espira motmokla. Ba jet regil agamodei talis ra ngar agadin state. Bela gi espira. Akmal dimlangasulela beklas ra si esegi de. Spirit gua praisyon. Luldang me go kutmoki te mal lungil. Si seligaa. Chairman wa isenminx gau ma vice chairman ma spiga. Meng gi gi de sputa sagal di du ele kama msa msa te al.
Sula. Chairman afore na fe just for information. Ah a delegatena ura monte ra house of delegate. Obengela president barara Friday. Motion president ni ma. Agu ndasun senator. Ah whips. Obengela mong. The most united major general assembly. Emonte eri gi de. Eh. La diak albi ra al su gumun moriya. A conference ra ba jet. Endi obengede kada pasenira du den final reading ra agapsenii. Aula di go pen. For discussion kabo e utobu.
Eh spiga. Ah. Akmo mo da du le. Eh aigel toko di lu atangakul telera bulu amrigayo ka. Akutul tubangal. Si el omes ra aurere emling. Endi dimlaal chairman na dimlaal dibelwa king ma abay si lo si ok. Nu ashe washe washe. Mongiwa unil justification. Ataliam mbanani le. Makaspira makambanani le si la duru la ngesu ma ra kwam. Eh ngak ya amirgos ma kambalan wa shal. Ngara justification raika. Den se edel mo endi ke demam sa du gi de ra adra bulu bela. Eh? Spiga meng akmrengasulela mel raiser ni. Eh akumbraa alu ku si ra adra bulu adu unil bolu dengel lo si. Mongiwa unil justification. E ke demu omur lo si. Ngwa ngara ngorupetel led. Le tepetoka uspe anes. Nding klabi el tiya udu. Spiga among aigel information algi da. Omes ogiwa report ra engineers. Quotation estimation. Ma win negotiation. In tova oor. El mosu edel apla ni el merah aungit. Ah toko ra kwam. Dongu ra egal kabluwa. Espira. Eh awul makpilgos ma kambalan ra performance budget report. Picos si segi da toko ringi mulu ra redet. Chairman na amlingeli pu omgos mringi espira. Padamro ra aigal oure i justify. De galon deser aklungi la black grant. The proposal niya president. Me gi de madangliya ni sergi. Lo ventier governor sergi. Bedenge aigal uspe legal oor. E gi da justify legal oor. Omes espira atirge ngar legal kurri report. Si el domes ra black grant teri. Ngaringi gelu du de de la. Le tiya de proposal ni emun dengi ku si. Wa aklungi laa ra omos aklela. A amount. So spiga re gi gi de amnesual share. Eda le squal mrengasulela chairman tel lelen. Obaklat teri gi de lo si. Awredet da diakal. Diakal dirut ra ora kimots. Ndemort ra unil justification. Si esegi da klo bukul espira. E godutmokla redet. E goongi mo. Aigel guk no rio a priority ni. Abo da address. Present next. The available time espira. Meng segi da kati amnesual share ni espira de. Aigel akmay kansuliya tel ley. Mrengasulela aswal ablay. Eh mbedengel lo si tel amon ke garen iliri. A utobu da bulu diogir. Le eti endu de kada justify gal redet. Espira. Agi gi da kodi kansulir ti kal teru rubak la egal tablo bulu. Eh bol moklo niya beklas. Lomes si tiya. Si shonu gi. Ma egal oura bol omes ra adra bulu ra ri. Ling mo public info. Tembedengel ku si. Unwell justified at least to the best of our abilities. Si esegi da kati amnesual share ni espira de ma msa gora te al.
Sula eh. Eda li geta ra ngatpan. Al su gumun. Diak agu du eh sula eh. Meguni tra point of privilege. Eh recognize la. Ah staff president tel ngartian. Nganga me mla yiro guil du du me olava mmo ra president. Ti gi guka da domestikil teru de la ngartian. Eda doran asulir debis tria proto. Oi. Eh tirigaya oma gargi de mora bulu ra. Abela ulolawa aigel toko ra. A foreign affair ma domestika affairs. Aiga mal. Aiga mal giril demilisi program. Eh domes si flor. Namu ilu discussion emalteno klaq. Membo da uwa kamiti report. Eh dongu ra segi de guk du lu le. Eh sula ngaria. Uh uwa ra me ma gora ngaraklema da. Iga me unira siel baklasi. Flor leader gamu alawle.
Bol wa isespira. Menga. Ela ya members wal mutu mo du. Giril tiya kamiti report espira eh. Eh kultel ruliamauxon for adoption tiya standing kamiti report eleven das one or two. Ni giril.
La ya second. Okay. Segi da mouxon el mrap tiya kamiti report ra. Ah unified baat seta twenty twenty four. Emla second deh. Ti el go me. Ma adapt tiya kamiti report du oi? No? Di amna mayra house unanimous. Gi de president twenty five delegates. Flor leader.
Eh espira. Padamro si item twelve. Bill galenderi diak ngara first. Ti ngaria ra second. Makmomi mouxon mouxon. Pasara second reading house pin eleven das one fourteen das eleven.
Segi da mouxon. Mlar tiya bira second reading. Eh da na second reading diak require. Reading ra taito ra bill. E di regel tirigar wortamu do la. Orolko. Ti el go me. Pasatiya bira second reading. Du oi? Onto. Di amna mayra flor leader unanimous fifteen delegates ngartian.
Eh weh de most item fifteen. Ngaria. Adi. Misery communications under seven. Ari siel two nineteen a letter from SS. El giril siel. Ah RPL eleven das twenty four. Edi ngaria two twenty indication ra API. Giril siel for general assembly. Morira October sixteen and not twenty one. Edi misery communications two twenty one. Fabier mlar a bureau of communication ra MPII. El giril la. A para telekom market performance report. Edi ngaria misery communications two twenty two. Na taqal chairman delegate Marinor giril segi de. Eh ba. A conference el amerin bela. Telegrapla Pacific Island Parliament group. Awulabu ngala two twenty three. Amlar a chief assist ni regelau. Li giril siel baat set request rtil giril la FY twenty twenty four. E gi da mostel sixteen misery news.
Su du na we ba misery news eh. Kabo e delegatra beli.
La ra te al eh spiga mal di breza. Ah. The notice el department communication number seventy five. Giril tiya child raising subsidy regulations el ngarmadat. Ah. Ngaria rubakara ngarataray gal musang ra weekend. Engora mlar ni a gil giril tiya. Eh mal time li le ti gi de regulations el ngar madat. Mongiwa giril lo si. Ta ngaria ngelgam. El mal musang la aurere lmi tergal ngel gir. El mke grei. Akira blimam e agi omgoro uru tir. Ma gama mtsu omamel mo benefitter tiya gi de. Child raising subsidy regulations. Reke ma agi agi omalgar tergal ngal. Eh mal di sagal ogi tiya te al eh lo si. Mal di ke de tiya regulation. Eh mal magatakli lo si. Parent ringel ngalga mal uben legal guardian. Parent rengel ngalga, mal ubing legal guardian, asavell omtei. El mo, mla, benefitter ti agidil subsidy, ah, child raising ogiv tiyal regulation. Eh, ti agidil, regulation, ngatboklo, tirakramandaitra RPL eleven dash, ah, eleven. Sel mestirita eale, our parents or legal guardian, el mo apply mo ra, mongoa hundred talal subsidy. El, omgoro ra, armgegril ngeligir. Sula eale, espi.
Sula, ede li geta, mbeligi, kabo ede li geta October.
Espi, gera, madengasola eale. Espi, gera, mo da du, atangakul, ometaro ngak, omes ra, sela regulation, el bil sapit ringi for review. Espi, gera, direkaxal mu ngil musang, ndi mo da du, ometaro ngak, omes ringi. Eh, omes sela subsection, section three, agel definitions. Ra subsection three point two, sela definition ra child, agirade el mutu mu ngil, omesengi. Le child, adal belukul wasin, child, el, lo, lo SS number, eh, eh, ngara, ngurang. Aksimbar ngi, kulo wasi, a child, any child, arrodla ma, an natural, ngak omra kungire eligible, leng child. Mang, ngasukum, kudomo, mra ngil wasin, girel SS number, agirade el citizen bela, alimul mori ngi problem. Mang, aktu adarsa ege, umal mso le, chairman, kita ngara comment, ma kumrang espi, gera, sela burakamiti, kita mosira comment terkid odak. Letadamasabak ra, our children, aler children, ah, ah, innocent, raw politics, marwangarang. Se, mang, kumrang, akmosi, kada help putir, ndiak abodo, putir, aga gidhe, aga gidhe, problem. Define wasin, who is a child. Espi, gera, aktu adarsa ege, madengasule, rata eale, madengasule, aswal ablay, el borakamiti, dakainasul, musang.
Sula, eh, eh, October, bereng, asana mora chairman ra held, patamuri, ya, kurita beklas, bolaya, imurim, artesuri. Kanutel follow up, ede li geta.
Quick, ah, clarification, aktial, eh, regulations, ah, bo implement ringi, sela division of human services. El ngara ospita, leng war ngi ma, an adra belu, direkeldirukuml mol, mla, ngaria giri, tiya, asupri lo mgodol se. Letirge agi diya, omorar, ti agidil program. Sula eale.
Sula kabo ede li geta ra, ngaralung.
Espi, gera, akmal di mumre de, sel domes sela newspaper, aktia bela, el alsil. Eh, mal, wasi USDA to partner with energy providers to lower cost for people in rural areas. Eh, sel domu ya, shawasint sela September first, twenty twenty three, ah, US Department of Agriculture, amle announce losiga, appligase, teki agel ader tirah, losiga, ngeso, ah, for energy providers to lower the cost for people in rural areas. Mang, motau taige bela, da du, oldi da misao de el alsil, loaseng. APUCI have not explored into their option with USDA. Aga gidhe available ngeso, el sebi ra, ada PPUCI, and they can apply electronically. Tiya, ngara news akmul waise. Soadu mo, dimisil wasin, everything we said this morning, el girel, atgora USDA help, el mora wa agel togora energy, ma wa PPUCI, amral available. Ti agil ngara news wasisera September first, etir amle ok, announcing il wasin. Ah, adra, US Department of Agriculture, amla announce sela sing, USDA, osiga, appli, appligant, atir ospe anes gire. Especially for teki ngar energy providers. Sei domesengi, ndireka subidil wasin, USDA expects to award up to ten million for fiscal year of twenty twenty four. So, lu ngil information, eh, share ngi, ma guk, lu guke, du du, ti wasin. Ngaria, ngar sela news, el mal mulut, el girela guk ngeso, gumu ospe, ndiak laga, available, mukumi, ndireka lekoli. Sula espi.
Ya, sula, ede li geta ngarlung, kado namu, ngelose, alsegum, ma ngarri, ya, alsegum, ndiak, sibilstovalong, kado duosmri, ndiak lekora IDV. Tedi ngara USDA, ngia sula problem belu bela. Kabo e, follow up.
Sel domu, tiel news, wasi, the grants will help providers offset cost for people who saw the energy expenses total two hundred seventy five percent of the national average or higher. So, swadu, lo ngita ada PPUCI, wasi, bo, nomes agel, agel, liura, ndiak, ndiak, di pncs sese la play, gumi, gomal, sibi la play. Aga ngeso mora, awa bela, ndireka sibi.
Okay, sula, ngaralung. Kabo ede li geta October.
Eh, espi, gera, romal mso, momlilimarmu, eh, le, ah, regala newspaper, mso da grant, mang kotul ngil, ndiak, ndiak, loan, ndiak, haraw. Ndi, ndireka ogiv, al du, orgiles, espi, gera, kaval, me invite, teki agel ader, USDA may. Ngaria, matching loan, trural NDP, malu, agel, beluwa, asavell direct, el mong, terregister online, eh, take advantage, ngel system. Ah, YSO, il, PPUCI state owned enterprise, mal sava el, soft loan, ma grant, malu, campaint. Mang, espi, gera, agi gidhe kora dit eale, mang, auul mak, on, mongulora, ah, chairman sinsak. Ah, bader ngak, sel response, andar sel babil, lorgi, mundiak. Mang, mundiak, eh, ngakalimla, agi watutau, mang, auul, ngadi, kung silodi, ndi, akumes, newspaper, ngaria. Mang, adi effort, asia dibus. Sula eale, espi.
Ya, sula, ti, regati, pitro sia, USDA, girel mu osmrel, eh, bay dosstov, mora IDV. Ma la, adam rigela savi il guk, skuisi gidhe, mang, tadi October du du, diak da play, adiak da ngai. Alsegum, ndiak, seder mora, sadu arabia, malu, kudomo rafriks, agia eale, seder mori. Floride.
Ngaria, ede li geta, wasol, announce, sketu ra, weel, teki a tay. Ti agi, me gamauxon, padam, urises ra sessioner gidhe, el mulut ra, nu.
After a midnight.
After a midnight. Sela one minute past midnight.
Seki da mauxon, action tiyal second day journal. Oh, egidhe, kada action ngi, sela, amid the recess, eh, ti agidil second day, eh, mo, eh, mo muradur de dera uriura sela baklusi, sebo dombo do ri. Tekere gongi, padam, urises tiyan, ul, second deh, special session du oi. Onto. Namu waise.